Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the Montgomery County Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 13th. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Rice?
I am here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Okay, first up, we have UNCF campaign results, and Tom, I think you're going to lead this off.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodge. Yes, we were very pleased once again in 2021 to conduct a worse workplace giving campaign for UNCF. UNCF is one of our county authorized workplace giving campaigns. UNCF is a given campaign in addition to Culture Works, The United Way, and of course, our our own Human Services Levy activity. So with that, I'd like to provide just a very brief presentation on how the campaign went. The campaign was conducted in February, and in moving to the next, the next slide, you can see that we had a variety of activities that were that had participation during the month. We had an art auction and other things that were in the auction. We had a new activity, which was a, we termed the date for Race for Education, which I'll talk about in just a minute. We had our Dine to Donate where we worked with with area restaurants for donations, a mask up for UNCF, which of course was a part of the pandemic opportunity, and then a cheer support for UNCF. Going to just a little bit more detail as we move forward here. Last year, we began our art auction activity for the campaign. This was our second year of an art auction. This is just a sampling of some of the art that was auctioned off. We had some art that was donated by local artists. We had others that were that were picked up and and were prints that were donated. And we really had a successful auction this year, and it really did well for the campaign. But this just gives you an idea of some of the artwork and some of the activity that took place. We had more than 20 pieces of art that were available, and this raised around $2,500 into the campaign. And as we move along, Deb, part of our other auction activities, we had a couple of primary sponsors that donated prizes. Mercedes Benz of Centerville donated the weekend use for Mercedes Benz. And then we had a weekend getaway that was donated by the Fairfield of Mary Fairfield by Marriott Dayton location. So these were other things were part of the auction. Oh, I'm sorry, and Coco's was also partnered as dinner with the weekend getaway. Moving along, I mentioned the Dayton Race for Education earlier. This was a new event this year where we actually had employees sponsor Hot Wheels cars in a drag race elimination campaign that went on through the entire month of February. This raised about $1,500, and we had an overall champion that was Sarah Fields, who was our assistant, our assistant director in job and family services, who was responsible for child support. We had two primary sponsors here, which were the Adamas Board from Montgomery County and our own Human Services Planning and Development Department. It was a neat activity. We had a lot of of staff participation. And again, we raised some funds, and you can see that Sarah is displaying her championship trophy for the month of February as a culmination of all the races. As we move along, also in the workplace giving campaign, I mentioned Dine to Donate. Chipotle, Mexican Grill, and Uno's participated and allowed part of our proceeds to go into the campaign. We also had some UNCF decorative masks that were for sale that some of our staff purchased. We also had some glasses and goblets that bore the UNCF logo that were purchased. And then we had employees who participated in casual days that donated to wear casual clothing during the month of February, and those proceeds went into the campaign as well. Then from our next slide, what I'm really pleased to announce today is that we have a campaign check for $26,056.38 that represents our month-long giving. It will be donated to UNCF for our workplace giving campaign. So this, these are our proceeds for the month of February for the campaign. And we real, we feel really proud of this amount during our campaign this year because we also did face the challenge of the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased challenges of doing a virtual campaign, pulling our resources together, and really trying to forge forward in a little bit of a different environment this year. So we're really happy that we're able to move the campaign forward and still provide a very viable campaign on behalf of UNCF. So then focusing for just a minute on our scholarship program. Our scholarship criteria for this year are that we do provide scholarships for applicants who are at least high school seniors, or they could be college students. They're a Montgomery County resident, attending any two or four-year credit accredited college university. They have a minimum 2.5 grade point average. They have completed the free application for federal student aid, also known as the FASTFo, that they are Montgomery County Scholars App, Applications. They have a rec, a letter of recommendation, and they must demonstrate that they have unmet financial need. Those are our criteria, and they can find more information on our college application process by visiting our website at mcohio.org/uncf. So with that information, you know, I want to thank our county employees. I certainly want to thank the county commissioners. I want to thank all of our UNCF department coordinators. And I want to remind everyone that, you know, a mind is a terrible thing to waste, but it, but UNCF and our scholarships are certainly a great thing to invest in. And with that, I want to call in, call on Steve Miller, who is the area representative for UNCF out of their Columbus office, to offer a few of his comments on behalf of UNCF. Steve, it's all yours.
Tom, thank you very much. First, we want to thank Commissioner Judy Dodge, Commissioner Debbie Lieberman, and Commissioner Carolyn Rice for their leadership and support of United Negro College Fund and the Workplace Giving. Also, my friend Michael Colbert for his leadership and support, and Jerry P. Gees for her undying support and active support in supporting you, Tom, and your team to help raise dollars for United Negro College Fund to help our students go to and through college. We really are appreciative of all of your efforts. Again, Dayton and Montgomery County is our number one workforce campaign with UNCF here in the state of Ohio, and we are extremely grateful and thankful for all of your support. And truly, your success through your employees and associates, this would not be possible without leadership, and your leadership support is greatly appreciated. We do believe that this success is part and parcel, most helpful, just because of, you know, where we find ourselves in a very unique time in history with COVID changing all of our lives, our work habits, and also the unfortunate social justice challenges that we have. But you guys have endeavored to continue to support the work that we're doing to help students go to and through college to any two or four-year credit university of their choice. So with your workplace giving through payroll deduction and other matching gifts, your close to $30,000 donation is very, very important. We've remained focused on helping local Montgomery County students and students in Ohio through this very difficult time. Our organization here has raised over $1.5 million statewide and raised close to $200,000 in the Montgomery County area for students to attend college. So your funds actually put us over the top of the million-dollar goal that we had. Actually, our goal was 600,000, but we raised over $1 million, and your dollars helped us cross the finish line right before our fiscal year ended on March 31st. So we are greatly appreciative and want to thank you for that and really applaud all of the coordinators and the creativity that you use during this COVID virtual environment with the racetrack and all of the other events and opportunities that that Tom Champion and the rest of your staff and coordinators did. Outstanding, and we are greatly appreciative of that. We believe that the work that we're doing will help inspire leadership for student achievement and create workforce diversity there for the county through our state. So we just can't thank you enough, thank the commissioners enough, thank the individual employees that sacrifice out of their paychecks, gifts to support the work that we do. And we're looking forward to continuing our relationship with Montgomery County. We, of course, are looking forward to in-person opportunities as soon as this pandemic passes us by to really continue this work to support students, whether they want to attend Wilberforce, Central State, UD, Cincinnati, Harvard, Howard, wherever, or Ohio State. We are providing those financial opportunities for kids and really want to make sure that students know that there are dollars available and that there are caring professionals and adults in Montgomery County, supported by the commissioner's office, to make sure funds are available. UNCF has been doing this work for over 77 years. We've raised close to $5 billion in that time nationally. We support 37 member historically black college institutions that are private, like Wilberforce University that I'm a graduate of, and Central State University, which receives state and federal funds. Excuse me for that. We provided over 10,000 scholarships to students annually and over nine, to over 1,200 colleges and universities. So we believe that the work that we're doing by administering over $100 million in scholarships nationally and 400 scholarship programs and internship programs are making a difference. So we thank you. We want to continue this relationship and want to do anything we can to continue to grow and help more students. So again, to Michael Colbert, Jerry P. Gees, Tom Kelly, and Commissioners Dodge, Lieberman, and Rice, we thank you, and we ask you to always remember that a mind is a terrible thing to waste, but a great thing to invest in. God bless you.
Well, thank you, and also another shout out to all the volunteers, our employees that stepped up to do this. And, you know, it's every year, we've been doing this now for many years, and every year there's always some, yeah, great creative ideas to raise money, so we couldn't be more pleased. So, you know, thank you for coming in, and the commissioners, did anybody else have anything to add?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of our employees, you know, breaking a record again, and hopefully every year we'll get a little bit more because we want to make sure that students in Montgomery, from Montgomery County are able to afford school. And this has always been, I mean, I remember as a kid watching the UNCF telethons on TV, and, you know, I don't know if they're called telethons, but you know.
They were, yes, yes, they were.
And, you know, it's just so important, and I, and I'm glad that we're able to take part in that, so thank you.
No, thank you, and we thank your employees. We thank managers. We thank their leadership. We thank the coordinators especially. And again, this doesn't happen without leadership, and we are just so grateful, and we want to continue to do more because there's a lot of talent out there, and we want these young people to have opportunities to make an impact in our community. So we thank you again.
I definitely chime in with everything that my fellow commissioners have just said, and I, I just have to tell you, it's just one more example how our Montgomery County team and our staff come through with flying colors, no matter, especially for a fantastic cause like this, that will have a ripple effect for years to come. But no COVID pandemic or anything like that can stop us when we're on a mission. So I, I'm just really proud of everyone and thankful for all the efforts, everyone.
Steve, tell the, tell the team at UNCF how much we appreciate them. You know, this year, when we, we rolled out the new campaign to the entire county, and once we started talking about the numbers within Montgomery County, the number of recipients of scholarships, everybody was on board across all the departments. So the entire leadership team has been behind this. We thank the commissioners for their support. Tom came up, him and Jerry, with some really creative things to do this year. I think the race car, the race car piece was at a whole nother level, and I think that was really good, along with the, the art auction. And everybody just really galvanized around it this year, and we really didn't project that we would hit these numbers, especially post-COVID. But all of our county employees and everyone just rallied around it. So thanks, Steve, for your technical support from the association, from UNCF, and then Tom and Jerry and the entire leadership team. Thanks for, for getting on board with this. Thank you.
Well, Michael, you know, we again, thank you, and a special thanks has to go out to Jerry P. Gees, because she, you know, drives the bus on a lot of the detail and really works with Tom and all the coordinators, and she does an amazing job, and we appreciate your leadership and support. And we're looking forward to bigger and better things for next year. Hopefully, this COVID won't slow us down. You know, Dayton's been a very resilient community, having gone through a number of tragedies last year and then with COVID. So we know that there's a lot of strong people, and there's a lot of vision and support for our work, and we're looking forward to do more. And Tom's going to have to come up with another creative idea. I don't know if he can beat the, the Hot Wheels again, but that was amazing. So, you know, we're, we're here to support you, not just for the workplace giving. I know we had talked about, you know, doing a breakfast or some other things. We're available to support you in any way that you want year-round because we know every, every dollar counts, whether it's $20 for books or pens or $1,000 for tuition or computers. We know our students need this help, especially in these very, very unique times. So again, we, we really humbly and graciously thank you for all your support.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And again, the biggest thing goes to, and again, the biggest thing goes to every single Montgomery County employee for taking a part in this campaign. Can't say that enough.
Absolutely.
So thank you, and we'll, we'll see you again next year, Steve.
All right, God bless you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we have an update on the Prescription Medication Safety Campaign. Gail?
Good afternoon, Montgomery County Commissioners. My name's Gail Daffler, and I'm the Prevention Coordinator at Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley. I have my coworker Justine Bauer, she's with me as well. And we're gonna, we're gonna go through and talk a little bit about why it's important to be safe around your medications. We're going to talk about what is medication misuse, and then we're also going to talk a little bit about our DEA Take Back Day that's upcoming. That is April the 24th. We want to encourage all of our Montgomery County residents to take part of that day and to have tools then to be, make their, make their home safer on medications. We're having an activity we want to share, share with you. And can everybody see that? Okay. Great. Okay. So we're going to look at what, what is misusing medication? Our definition of that is taking more medication than prescribed, not following those directions that our physicians give us. Taking medication for a different reason than prescribed. Maybe if you were given, like, say, medication for, like, a knee surgery, and you use it for a headache, that would be misuse then. Or sharing or taking somebody else's medication, no matter, no matter what the reason is. So usually, we try to have, like, good reasons for around that, but that, that is all considered misuse. Prescription drug misuse is a national epidemic, and that is something that we're, we're all dealing with here in the United States. But here in Montgomery County, this is from our Public Health, their website. This is information about the accidental overdose deaths in 2019 through 2021. So we, unfortunately, we're having too many people passing away from unintentional drug overdoses. And as we know with opioids, most of those people, around 80% of those people, started off by misusing prescription medications. Maybe they had a surgery, and maybe they didn't follow those directions the way they needed to, and so they might have used more, and then once that was cut off, maybe they went to some other street-level drugs. So we're really encouraging everybody to follow those, follow those directions because our lives are very important. And at the end of this, we're going to give our community members a tool to get connected to resources around, like, say, if they're concerned about somebody who's dealing with an addiction. So we do have good news here, and I'm going to, I'm going to give the good news slides to Ms. Justine Bauer, because there, there are really great steps that all of us can take to make our community safer around prescription medications.
So we have tons of good news. So these are some steps that you guys can take as an individual to help make our communities and our homes safer. And this is why we, you know, go out to the community, whether it be schools, churches, anywhere where there's groups of people, and share this information. So the first step is, is to only use medication as directed by a healthcare professional. And, and that applies as well for over-the-counter medication as well as prescription. Do not share or take someone else's medication. I mean, the number one reason for that is, is we don't know what they're taking already. We don't know if there's going to be interaction. We don't know if they're going to be allergic to the medication. So we really don't want to harm anybody else or even harm ourselves by taking something that has not been discussed with a physician. Keeping your medication safe and then being just a role model for medication safety, whether it be a role model for your household, a role model for your work, just for our community. So before accepting pain medication, making sure that we ask a lot of questions with our physician. No question is too small because this is something you're putting into your body. So we want to make sure, you know, is this the right pain medication for myself? What are the risks involved? Do you have a family history of addiction? If so, that might be something that you want to talk to your physician about and make sure that they understand. If there's another medication that I can take that's less addictive, let's try that route. And then just the, the safe pain medication practices. So, you know, how often should I be taking this? Should I be weaning myself off of this? Is it okay if I don't want to finish out the prescription and I start to feel better? So just kind of asking all those different questions around your pain medication or any medication that you take. Next slide. Gail, next slide. We seem to be having some technical difficulties, so I'm just going to kind of keep going. But the next thing I would like to emphasize is to ask for the alternatives. We all get pains, aches and pains as we get older or as stress increases or decreases. And so we want to make sure that we're asking for alternatives, whether it be yoga, stretching, you know, maybe doing some meditation. So just making sure that we are aware that there are other ways of dealing with pain before we go to just taking a pain medication, and that can even include trying alternatives, like going to the chiropractor. So next, so yeah, so keeping medication safe is very important, especially in our homes. I know with COVID, we don't necessarily have as many visitors like we normally do in our homes, but making sure that we're, wherever we keep our medication, that it's locked or up high where small fingers cannot reach. Because we like to thank everyone that we invite in our home is, you know, we can trust them fully, but if we keep our medication in the bathroom, which is a private area, you know, there's always that slight chance that that one person might take some of your medication without your permission, and it's not their medication. So we just want to make sure that we're keeping it safe. The next thing I'm, I like to mention is the medication drop boxes. They are located throughout different pharmacies in your area, as well as available in some courthouses. I know, like, I think Oakwood has one in their courthouse, which is awesome. So these are all over. You can just take your medication, drop it off there. We want to make sure that if there's medication that we are not using, that we just go ahead and eliminate that risk of somebody else staying a hold of it and just disregarding it. Another alternative for the Dropbox is twice a year, we have an event with the DEA National Take Back Day. This year, we are lucky enough to hold one of the events here at Goodwill Easter Seals Downtown. It is a drive-through only, so you can clean out all your medicine, and you can just drop it off, no questions asked. We just want to make sure that we're taking that unnecessary medication out of our homes. Another resource that you guys have near disposal is the medication disposal pouches. So medication disposal pouches, we have them here at Goodwill. We can, you know, all you have to do is email us, and we can either drop them off at your location, or you guys can pick them up here at Goodwill Easter Seals. And it's just a little pouch, and all you do is just open it, put the medicine in it, add some water, seal it up, and shake it like a salt shaker or shake weight, and that just deactivates the medicine. So that way, we're not putting it into our water system or in our soil. So it's just a safer, environmentally friendly way of disposing of those medications. Some other resources that you guys have to use is the Get Help, Get Help Now app. This is one of my favorite apps because it's one app, it's free, and it has all kinds of resources for Montgomery County. So if you're, you're feeling down in the dumps, it's got the warm, the warm line that's provided by Goodwill Easter Seals. It also has the crisis care line on there, just all kinds of different resources. So you may be thinking to yourself, well, I don't really need that right now, and that's okay, but there might be someone in your life that you know could definitely benefit from using the app. So, yeah, so all this information that I kind of talked about is through our program, Generation RX, which is a website that is provided by the Ohio State Pharmacy. And it has a bunch of different toolkits. So, you know, if you're interested in maybe finding ways to kind of share this message with your community, they have toolkits for elementary, they have toolkits for teens, adults, college-age kids, and older adults. You know, Gail and I would be happy to come out and kind of help you guys facilitate that or even answer any questions that you have about those different toolkits. So, yeah, does anybody have any questions about medication safety and things that you can do in your community?
Justine, I would just say, this is Michael. I don't know if we can see each other and with the split panes. This is Michael Colbert, the county administrator.
Hi.
The part you talked about on the medicine disposal, where you, I guess, put it in the device and shake it up.
Yeah.
And it kind of, I, I bet a lot of people don't know about that. I, I had never heard about that. So thanks for, thanks for saying that.
Yeah, no problem. And like I said, if you guys want some, I mean, just let us know, and we will be happy to get it to you one way or another. You know, I just dropped off a bunch, you know, at some pharmacies and things like that. I mean, we can do quantities of 25 or even more because it's always helpful to have those around because you never know when you're, when you're going to need it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you know, this is just such important information. Are you going out into the community and talking to different groups about it? Because I'm just thinking with, you know, seniors and, and, you know, some of them may not even know what to do with their, their medicine when they're finished.
Yeah, so we are definitely out there. We are, and we are in schools, you know, for great, grade levels, pre-K to the graduation. You know, we're trying to get into some universities, and we do also do it for older adults. And we have various activities. We do presentations, we do activities, so it's a little fun. And we have various activities. We do presentations, we do activities, so it's a little fun. But with the elderly group, we're just now starting to get back in the groove. It's been kind of hard just with COVID and everything being locked down, but we've definitely with the medication pouches have been dropping those off at retirement centers, nursing homes, things like that. Because, yeah, they're constantly changing medications or, you know, sometimes, you know, we lose people and we have the families left with all this medication and they don't know what to do with it. So we've been really trying to educate the people that no matter the scenario, you know, we want to make sure that we're getting that medication off the street for somebody else to use.
Good, good. Is there a phone number, anything you can give in case someone that is listening to this might have a couple of questions or would like you to come out and give a presentation?
Yeah, in the chat, I can go ahead and put Gail and I's information in there. That way you guys can just copy and paste if you want. I can do that before.
And thank you. Thank you again. Thank you for letting us speak, and I'm sorry about our slideshow. That was an error, a user error for on my behalf, so. Yeah, please give us a call, anyone who would like medication disposal pouches, who would like information about what we give out and possibly do some presentations. And we're inviting everybody to look at the DEA website to see what event is near you. Because there's there's several events in Montgomery County that you can go to. And we're just proud to have one at Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley with the Dayton Police Department. So we're encouraging everybody to look through the houses and to clean out their medicine cabinets in their homes and to make Montgomery County safer. Back the last big event that we had, which was in twenty nineteen, Montgomery County, they disposed of eleven thousand pounds of medication. That is quite a bit. So please, everybody go through their homes now and see if we can beat that number. We'd love to.
Yeah, well, the last thing you want is down the, as Matt Hilliard would say, we do not want that down the toilet in our water system, no question about it. So don't do that. Don't don't dump your old medicine. Okay.
Thank you guys so much for having us.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. Thank you. Okay, next up, county engineer.
Good afternoon, commissioners, administrative ladies and gentlemen. We have three resolutions today. The first is Resolution twenty one dash three ninety to set the date of May fourth, twenty twenty one for the viewing and May eleventh, twenty twenty one for the hearing on the Little York Road Bridge replacement project, the Butler Township. At three ninety one is to reduce the performance bond from Hanover Insurance Company by nine hundred twenty five thousand, seven hundred sixty nine dollars and forty seven cents for revised total of three hundred ninety eight thousand, three hundred sixty four dollars and sixty one cents for Washington Glen, Section One in Washington Township. And three ninety two is to reduce the performance bond from Hanover Insurance Company by two hundred and seventy two thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars and forty two cents for revised total of one hundred forty one thousand, fifteen dollars and five cents for Washington Glen, Section Two in Washington Township.
I'm in for approval.
I second. All those in favor? Aye. Myoma Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution three ninety three. Apply for a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for the FY twenty twenty one research and evaluation on crime laboratory systems and processes in the amount of five hundred and ninety thousand.
I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor? County Administrator.
Under the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on April sixth, twenty twenty one. Resolution three ninety four, approval bills and resolution three ninety five, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the clerk's office.
I'm in for approval.
I second. All those in favor? Administrative Services, Tyler.
We can't hear you.
Tyler.
Can't hear you.
Tyler, I'll go ahead and take your readings. Under Administrative Services, Commissioners, we have Resolution three ninety six, approval of personnel actions. That list is available in the clerk's office. We have Resolution three ninety seven, authorizing an agreement set with Claims Management Services, Inc. for Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA Administration Services for the Human Resource Department through November thirtieth, twenty twenty two. We have Resolution three ninety eight, amend the agreement with LWCE for the Municipal Court and Trotwood Project by adding nine thousand to the original amount for a revised total of four hundred and thirty nine thousand, one hundred and fifty due to the change in scope of work. We have two request proposals, Resolution three ninety nine, Property Casually Third Party Administration Services for the Risk Management Department and Resolution four hundred, RV for the Department of Job and Family Services. I think we also have, we have a late item.
Late item.
One late item, Commissioner. Resolution four one three, authorizing the option to renew agreement with ClearGov, Inc. for budgeting software for the Office of Management and Budget in the amount not to exceed twenty five thousand, five hundred through December thirty first, twenty twenty one.
I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor? Environmental Services, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Got seven resolutions for your consideration today. First is four oh one, amend the agreement with Double J Construction Incorporated for construction of the Maple Crest Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project by adding twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents to the original amount for revised total of three hundred and two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents. Resolution four oh two, approve the planned specifications and estimated cost of one million, four thousand, seven hundred ninety two dollars and eighty cents in solicit bids for construction of water facilities for the Sheldon Water Main Replacement Project. Resolution four oh three, release one hundred percent of the performance bond and subdividers contract from Bruins General Contracting Incorporated for the East State and Christian School Edition Project. Resolution four oh four, recent Resolution number twenty one dash zero zero nine zero, which authorized the subdividers contract with John Tomlinson for the Arrow Rock Avenue Water Main Extension Project. Resolution four oh five, release one hundred percent of the cash surety with John Tomlinson for the Arrow Rock Avenue Water Main Extension Project. The last two are to submit applications to participate in Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA Local Government Agency Loan Program and authorize cooperative agreements with OWDA. Resolution four oh six, Centerville North Tank Rehab Project in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Resolution four oh seven, Cynthia Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Commissioners, before you approve, hey, Matt, can you describe for the Commissioners the work that we have completed on the Maple Crest Project, which is Resolution four oh one? Commissioners, we made a commitment to the citizens that live on Maple Crest to completely finish that sewer project, and Matt and his team have done a fantastic job. So Matt, you want to weigh in there, please?
Yes, we we did get the all the connections and the sewer main installed. So everyone is tied in and currently it's their their sewer is flowing correctly into our system. So we had to replumb and do a little work within a couple of homes, one which we we discovered the the service line was under the garage. So we had to make some adjustments there. But overall, the the last piece is the restoration on the on the yards. And of course, we're working with the city of Kettering on the street restorations.
Thank you, Matt.
You know, this one was difficult for many reasons, right? Old, old infrastructure. And that and it just didn't work. The street is too small for anything and I really want to applaud our team, Matt, and everybody that worked on that. We got it done. We did the right thing. For those of you that remember, many, 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 many complaints about it. And and we, it's something we do. We do the right thing, even though we might not have had to do all the work we did, it was it was the right thing to do. So thank you, Michael and Matt, and really for for doing this.
Thanks for your support, Commissioners.
Oh, and absolutely. And I know today versus those many, many months ago that there are some very happy property owners on Maple Crest Drive who now hopefully have some restoration in faith that government can come through for them. So it's a great project and example and and truly thank you to your whole team. I know you did a stellar job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I second.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Human Services, Tom.
I have two items this afternoon. The first is under Human Services Planning and Development. Resolution four oh eight will authorize a delegation of activities agreement with YWCA Dayton for COVID nineteen Emergency Shelter Response Activities, Operations and Improvements in an amount not to exceed forty one thousand, five hundred ninety nine dollars of fiscal year two thousand nineteen ESG dash C V funds through December thirty first of two thousand twenty one. And then under Stillwater Center, Resolution four oh nine will authorize a price agreement with Worldwide Travel Staffing for temporary nur temporary nursing services through January thirty first, two thousand twenty two with options to renew.
I'm in for approval.
Oh, and I would add, I would add four oh eight for the YWCA is for their Huber Heights facility.
That's great. I'm really happy to see that moving along. That's great. I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor? This is Services, Chris.
Afternoon. Under Workforce Development, we have Resolution zero four one zero. Amend the agreement with Chronic Choices LLC by modifying Article One Scope With Service through December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Under Community Economic Development, we have authorizing a delegation of activities agreements through January thirty first, twenty twenty two. Zero four one one, City of Brookville for the Brookville Golden Gate Park Handicap Access Project in a mountain not to exceed sixty six thousand, seven ninety two. And zero four one two, City of Inglewood for the Inglewood Little League Challenger Field Project in a mountain not to exceed seventy five thousand dollars.
You know, I am so happy to see these ballparks going in, you know, the Challenger Field. There there have been many throughout the country that they're for everyone, but they're specifically for children that are handicapped and I just love that that Inglewood's doing it. I think we have one other in the county. I think they used to call them Miracle Parks, but I like the Challenger Field. And the same up at Brookville to have a handicap access there at the park is is great. So thank you. I'm in for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Emily, would you like to read? We have a statement that an individual has written in, a statement if you'd like to read it.
Yes. Mr. Tom Roberts has submitted public comments for the Commissioners that I will read at this time. Number one is what is the status of the county's plan to build a new jail? Number two, has a contractor been selected? And number three, what is the size of the new jail? These questions have been entered into the record and will be followed up with outside of the public meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, comments by county Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. I wanted to talk a little bit today, Commissioners, about the new Emergency Rental Assistance Program that began yesterday. Now, this is a U.S. Treasury program, but it is different than the CARES Act program in a number of ways, which I'll go through. Montgomery County received fifteen point eight million from the Treasury Department. And these funds will be distributed to help people pay for their rent. United Way is taking all applications and then they are sending them to one of our four partners who will be processing the applications for these funds. Now, those partners include Catholic Social Services of Miami Valley, Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley, Homeful, the Salvation Army Dayton Croc Center. Now, different than CARES Act, you have to verify your income as well as your landlord information. One of the four partner agencies will then verify with the landlord the balance is past due. Then the payment will be issued to the landlord or property management. Now, Commissioners, I know there is still a lot of need in the community. And I really hope this assistance helps, especially for those income families that are in lower income. It will also provide relief, for example, to a family of four who makes less than thirty eight thousand a year who has a hard time paying rent. But also for a family of four who makes less than sixty thousand dollars a year, they will also be considered for this aid. Commissioners, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Well, I I would totally agree that there is still a lot of need, even with, honestly, with this fifteen point eight million. There'll still be need when this has been allocated and distributed to families who are eligible. But as you already mentioned, this is not, this fifteen point eight million is not to be confused with the CARES Act funding that we had last year. The Emergency Rental Assistance Program, as you've already indicated, must meet certain income requirements with, they're going to prioritize those who are at or below fifty percent of the area median income. But keep in mind that anyone at or below eighty percent of the area median income is eligible. So if you are, if you know of any families who have this issue and they are eligible, they should certainly apply. We would encourage them to do so, you know, as soon as they can, but there's not the rush like there was with the CARES Act program. And they they will also have to, these four organizations will be distributing the fund. And we have put several safeguards in place to minimize fraudulent applications. So that is all to be certain that it goes to those who meet the requirements and really need it. So the way anyone should think about this, it's the United Ways Help Link two one one program is taking all the initial applications. So that's real simple. To start the process, all anyone needs to do is to call two one one. And as I recall, it's even open twenty four hours a day. So it's not even limited hours during the day. You get off work, you can do it in the evening and call and they will take, you will talk to a live person. They will take your information, they'll ask you questions, and one of the four partners will then follow up to get further details. So we hope it's really easy for people to remember two one one. It's like nine one one, but it's not life or death. It's just important information and and you need something. So remember two one one. And you'll talk to a real person, you'll give them information. If you qualify, they're going to send you on, they're going to send your name and information onto one of these four and they'll follow up with you. So we want everyone who is eligible to please and has, you know, problems with their rent, they're behind in rent. They should take advantage of this program and there's more time, but I would get get my application in soon.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd also like to commend Chris and Tawana, and then thanks for your support, Ward. We worked very hard over the last few months to try to get this program out to create a digital path so it would be easy for the public to access and to create partnerships in the community that will help us distribute these dollars throughout the community. So thank you, Commissioners, for your support. And again, Chris and Tawana, thank you. Thank you and your team, Chris, for for moving this piece.
Thank you all. It's a it's a good model. It really is because those four partners we work with in the past, they work with are underserved, and so they know how to work with this. And we're really happy that we chose those four partners. So thank you, Michael and team and Tawana and Chris. This this is going to be so critical for our community. So thank you and thanks to the federal government.
Yep, the need is still there, no question about it. So again, as we've said, just two one one, very, very simple. If you know someone or you need help, please don't hesitate. So. Okay, on another note, this past Friday, we presented Gwendolyn Buchanan with the Brother Ray Fitz Award. Now, it was a virtual presentation and I was pleased to participate.
Now, it was a virtual presentation and I was pleased to participate with my fellow Commissioners. The award is named for, for the former president at the University of Dayton. The Brother Ray Award honors someone who has made a significant impact on the lives of children and families in Montgomery County. Gwen Buchanan was the 22nd recipient of this great honor. She has been a certified life coach at the Glen at St. Joseph for the past 14 years, helping young mothers assess their strengths and create plans to escape poverty. She is also the current president of the Carolyn Civic Council. Gwen has served on many, many community boards over the past 25 years and is a true servant leader. Her passion for her community shows as she mentors youth to prepare, to prepare them for their role as community leaders. Gwen's daughter, Kiana Daniels nominated her for the award and she can be seen in a very moving video tribute to Gwen within the virtual presentation. So I would like to encourage anyone, if you have not seen the presentation yet, it's available on the Brother Ray page under Human Services Planning and Development Department at mcohio.org. So that was a wonderful presentation and usually we're live when we do this. This was the first year, so. But it was very moving. It was just wonderful. So congratulations, Gwendolyn.
Yes, congratulations. And, you know, this event is something that we love. We love to have this event live in person at the top of the market. And every year, you know, you think, are we going to run out of people? No, because we have so many people in this community that are doing great work and certainly deserve the Brother Ray Award. So to Tom and his team who every year work to make sure this thing is nice and flows and it was a very nice virtual event. So thank you. All right. So a few weeks ago, we showed you some dogs from our, and by the way, my dogs were a little upset that they couldn't come into work with me today, but I said, no, you're too loud. So we've featured dogs for the Animal Resource Center who need loving homes. Unfortunately, we still have two of those pups that we showed you last month. And you may recall, Berada, I think I'm saying that right, Berada. And look at her. And she's, she's a lazy girl who likes to lounge around and binge watch Netflix. She's eight years old, is a little shy, but will cuddle up with you for a nap. And then we also still have Debbie at the ark. And this Debbie likes the finer things in life. Don't all Debbies like the finer things in life? She likes the cozy bed. She likes yummy kibble and scratches behind the ears. She's been at the ARC for seven months and she's very eager to find a family. And then we have Sullivan. And oh, look at Sullivan. This handsome guy is about six years old and he's looking for a good family to provide endless belly rubs and long walks. He's getting a little gray around the muzzle, but he's young at heart. Look at his ears. He's adorable. So please contact our Animal Resource Center and consider giving one of these dogs a chance of a great life with a loving family.
Yeah. We should do this more often. I just love it when, when we show our, our puppies out there and dogs that are out there at the Animal Resource Center. We just have such wonderful pets that I know all of us have gotten from there. So, and we love them to death, no question about it. Before I, we sign off, I do have to say that we have a proclamation that I want to read because it's about Culture Works and it's Restart the Arts Month, they're calling it. Whereas Montgomery County has a long history of supporting the arts and cultural heritage of our community. And whereas the arts and cultural sector has been shuttered and suffered great losses due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We all know that. And whereas our community is fortunate to have a united arts fund called Culture Works to solicit donations on behalf of arts and the cultural organizations. And whereas a single contribution to this United Arts Fund benefits multiple organizations. And whereas Montgomery County looks forward to arts and cultural organizations reemerging, we can hardly wait from the pandemic. And whereas Montgomery County is committed to supporting community efforts to restart the arts. And whereas Montgomery County encourages employee support for the arts through the Culture Works Workplace Giving Campaign. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio as part of the 2021 Annual Culture Works Campaign does hereby proclaim April 2021 as Restart the Arts Month, signed by the fellow Commissioners, myself, Judy Dodge, Debbie Lieberman and Carolyn Rice.
So that's great, you know.
We are so ready to start, restart the arts, no question about it.
I already love all the posters that are around the building. I mean, and it's, it's time. And while things are going to open up, they're not going to open up at 100% capacity. So and, and the arts didn't get as much money as everybody else in the country got. But this is important. Every year it's important, Culture Works, our campaign. And every year we give a little bit more. And our employees that lead this are just amazing, under Michael London and so many others. Of course, we're going to miss Marvy or Marvin. We're going to miss Doreen, her leadership. But it's always fun. And so I encourage everybody, county employees, let's, let's give, give often.
Okay. All right. Well, I have to sign off. I wasn't here last week. Hopefully.
Carolyn did. Yeah.
Everybody wear your mask and for heaven's sakes, it's time to get your shot now. So I believe a lot of us here have had our shots and not a problem. So please, please, it's, this pandemic, it's not over yet, no question about it. So our next Montgomery County Commission meeting is going to be next Tuesday, April 20th at 1:30.
I'm in for adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.